Get started.
So Vice Chair Burton, yes, this is Jess McNeely with County Staff and County Staff is here. And it looks like we do have a quorum. We actually have seven Commissioners present. So yes, Vice Chair Burton, we are ready to hold this hearing.
Okay, so then it is 5:30. I'm going to call the meeting to order and we'll start with the meeting rules and procedures. Welcome to the December 4th, 2024, Meeting of the Coconino County Planning and Zoning Commission. Cases will be heard in the order they appear on the agenda. Following the staff presentation, the applicant and/or the applicant's representative may address the commission. As an applicant, if you agree with the staff report and have no additional information, please feel free to keep your comments brief. Any relevant comments are welcome. Following the applicant's presentation, I will make a call to the public. If you wish to address this case, please state your name and address. We ask that your comments be limited to three minutes or less. Comments must be relevant to the case. Please address all comments to the commission. No matter how strongly you may feel about the case, all comments must be respectful. After all interested public have spoken, the public comment portion will be closed. Discussion will then take place amongst Commissioners. Decisions of this commission regarding any zone change or preliminary subdivision plat approval are referred to the Board of Supervisors as a recommendation. All other case decisions are binding unless appealed to the Board of Supervisors. If you disagree with the commission's decision, you have 15 days to appeal. Please contact the Community Development Office for appeal procedures. Due to the virtual nature of this meeting, I will be doing a roll call vote of the Commissioners to assure accuracy for the record. We ask that you please mute your speakers and turn off your camera. Additionally, the message function of this platform is for communicating technical difficulties only. It is not for case discussion. Thank you for joining us this evening and actively participating in our county planting, planning. All right, Mr. McNeely, first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you please lead us?
Yes, I will do that, Vice Chair Burton. If you all could please join me, and I believe we will have a flag here in a second. There we go. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Vice Chair Burton.
Thank you, Mr. McNeely. Okay, second item on the agenda is the election of a Chair and Vice Chair for the commission. If the commission has no further discussion, then I will need a motion and a second for each appointment. Commissioner Ruggles?
Yes, I would like to nominate you as the new Chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission. And I think that's all it takes. That's all it's taken in the past, so I think this should be pretty simple. And if you want me to mention, say, instead of just you, Tiana Burton as Chair, that should do it.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Ruggles and a second by Commissioner Wilson. All those in favor, Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Tohe?
Aye.
Commissioner Walsh?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
And this is Vice Chair Burton. I also vote aye. Motion passes. And can we get a motion for Vice Chair, please?
I'll go ahead and do that.
Go ahead.
Okay, I would like to nominate Commissioner Wilson as Vice Chair of Planning and Zoning Commission.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Ruggles and a second by Commissioner Williams. All those in favor, Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Tohe?
Aye.
Commissioner Walsh?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Abstain.
This is Vice Chair Burton. I also vote aye. Motion passes. Okay, third item on the agenda is approval of the minutes for October 30th, 2024. I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of October 30th, 2024.
I will second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Williams and that was a second by, who seconded?
Walsh.
Walsh, Commissioner Walsh, thank you. Okay, so Commissioner Ruggles.
Okay, so we are ready to open the public hearings then?
Oh, we're, we're voting on the minutes?
Oh, okay, I am sorry. Aye.
Okay, Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Okay, Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Tohe?
Aye.
Commissioner Walsh?
Aye.
Vice Chair Wilson?
Aye.
This is Chair Burton abstaining since I wasn't here. Motion passes. Okay, fourth item on the agenda brings us to the public hearing portion. First up is a routine application for an RV as a permanent residence, Case CUP 24045. Are there any Commissioners who wish to discuss this case? Not seeing any. I do want to check with the applicant to make sure they received a copy of the staff report and agree with the conditions listed in the report. Would the applicant like to address the commission? Mr. McNeely, do we know if the applicant is on the call?
Chair Burton, I am not seeing that our property owner slash applicant Becky Graves is on this unless... Okay, here we go.
I'm here. I just dialed in because I've been waiting on teams and no one allowed me in the meeting, so I finally decided to call in, so.
It, it sounds like you might have had the same problem that I've been having. Did you click on the link in the agenda hearing packet?
Yeah.
Yeah, I have that same problem, so we do apologize for that.
That's okay, I'm here.
Did you receive a copy of the staff report? Do you agree with the conditions?
The staff report?
Yes.
I have several things from you guys.
Mr. McNeely, are you able to bring those conditions up?
Madam Chair, give me one second here and I will see if I can bring that.
I'm trying to go into what you sent me, the hearing packet. Things.
Yes.
From you guys, hang on one second, let me just get it. Okay, so is that in the first one that has all the information on it about where the meeting is?
No, that would be the staff report that would analyze, write about the case and then have, and then within the staff report, we would have conditions listed there.
Yes, who is, who am I speaking to? So this is Bob Keltzman.
I'm, I'm sorry, sir. We're, we're discussing a case with an applicant.
Okay, I see the finding, the findings of staff right here.
Can those not, the applicant, please mute your microphones?
Say again, please.
Can you please mute your microphone? We're, we're in a meeting discussion with the applicant.
Oh, okay, I'm a little bit hard hearing. I lost my hearing in Vietnam most of it, so I got my phone cranked way up.
That, that's okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so Becky Graves, our applicant, this, what you're seeing on the screen right now should be, is the recommended conditions of approval. That was following the, making the findings in the staff report. There's four recommended conditions of approval, and these are the standard conditions of approval that have been, that are always applied to.
Right, right here, so the proposal of location, conditional use, subjective ordinance, okay. RV is allowed as permanent resident in the AR zone with approval of a conditional use permit. The proposed location.
If you go to page five of five of the staff report, it's kind of the wrap-up of the staff report.
I'm almost there, sorry, I'm trying to get there. Okay, okay, I'm in, I'm in it, I'm right here, okay.
So recommended conditions of approval are four conditions, conditions one, two, three, and four.
Yes, that's fine.
Okay.
Okay, great, and I would like to remind, remind the public really quick, if you could turn off your cameras and mute your microphones, please. Okay, so you've, you've seen the conditions of approval and, and everything looks good to you?
Yeah.
Ma'am, are you talking to me?
Any, all members of the public, not the applicant, please mute your microphones and, and make sure your cameras are off. Okay, um, is there, okay, so if, if the applicant has no further comments, then I can open it to the public if anyone wishes to comment on Case CUP.
I just have one question. So for my electrical, I have to go through the building and environmental department to get that additional permit, correct?
Yes, this, the, the hearing this evening, correct, this, the hearing this evening is to approve the conditional use permit that you're allowed to use an RV as a permanent residence on the property. If that is approved this evening, then you will be required to get a building permit. That doesn't require hearing, it's a simple building permit that you will obtain to get your electrical hookup.
Got it, exactly, that's just what I needed to make sure that I was understanding, okay? Everything else is fine. I agree.
Okay, sounds good. Does anyone in the public have any comments on this particular case?
Yes, yes ma'am, this is... Hello?
Yeah, so this is, this is regarding the RV as a permanent residence. If that's the case you wish to comment on, can you please state your name and address? Can you, can you hear me? Okay. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to comment on Case CUP 24-045, recreational vehicle as a permanent residence? Okay, not seeing any. I'm going to close it for public and open it to the commission. I think at this point, we can take a motion and a second if we're ready to vote on this.
I'll make a motion to approve CUP 24045 as presented.
I'll second that.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, I have a motion by Vice Chair Wilson and a second by Commissioner Williams. All in favor, Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Tohe?
Aye.
Commissioner Walsh?
Aye.
Vice Chair Wilson?
Aye.
And this is Chair Burton. I also vote aye. Motion passes. Okay, the next item is Case CUP-24-044.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and Bob, looks like he's already sharing our, his screen, so go ahead, Bob, if you want to give a presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and, and congratulations on being Madam Chair again. It's easier to say that and not something else, so that's easy for us. This is the Wolfite Met Tower, CP 2444. And in this case, the application, the property owner, you know, the property owners are Crater Ranch LLC of Flagstaff and also Flying Elm Ranch LLP of Flagstaff. The applicant is AES Corporation of Arlington, Virginia. Representative is Jill Graham of SWICA in Flagstaff. The zoning is general and the location of the properties, properties in this case are south of Meteor Crater and the Happy Jack area on both of those ranches I previously mentioned. The size of this is 16 acre, is a 16 acre portion of six parcels, and those parcels total over 36,000 acres. And the 16 acre portion means that basically each met tower is on two acres. So this is, the request is a conditional use permit for eight 60-meter met towers. And just as a note, met towers are used to study meteorological conditions in an area to determine if the area is suitable for a wind farm. So that's what this is for, to study the wind, for potential wind farm in the future. These towers are less than 200 feet in height and the FAA does not require lights on the towers. The towers are proposed for an initial period of four years. And then if needed, they would, the applicant has requested, for additional years after that. The towers will be required to have bird diverters on the guide wires. These types of towers are all guide because they are temporary towers. And that makes a simpler way of installing them. This is site plan showing where the towers would be located. This is crater, or Meteor Crater Road. This is Meteor Crater, so you had, keep, keep going down that road and you'll run into the spots where the towers would be located. On the other side, you would need to come down Lake Mary Road and then go out in this directions to access the other towers. This is a photo of the site. This is only a portion of the site. It's a very large site, of course. And this, these are, this is the elevation of the tower. The towers are 197 feet, eight and a quarter inch, which equals 60 meters. Terms of citizen participation, these are really remote locations, so the neighborhood meeting requirement has been waived by the director. In lieu of that, Arizona State Land Department, the Arizona Game and Fish Department, and the Hopi Tribe were notified of those. Those are all landowners in this area. Staff has not received any comments on this application. Terms of staff analysis, met towers are allowed in the general zone with approval of a conditional use permit. This is an isolated location and it's not expected they would be visible from highways such as I-40 or not readily visible. The application is also consistent with the policy of the Conference of Land, and that's been addressed in the staff report. These are the findings effect for a conditional use permit. Those have also been addressed in the staff report. And with that, staff recommends approval of CP 2444 with the recommended conditions. And I did want to indicate, this is a different, these are different met towers than the ones out on the big Boquilla's Ranch. So though, that case has been postponed for a month or so. But that'll take any questions?
Commissioner Wilson?
Bob, you mentioned the additional four years might be required. Is that a part of this approval? If we approve it, does that include it, or will they have to come back and ask for that? I'm sorry, Mr. Short.
That would be part of this approval, or that is... Getting feedback, someone needs to, please mute your microphone. So in this case, staff didn't see any, it'd be necessary to come back in four years, so we indicated that the expiration date would be in eight years.
So it's an eight-year approval, okay.
It would be an eight-year approval, right.
And, and what does not readily visible mean technically?
In this case, I don't expect it to be visible at all. It's pretty far, as you can see, let's go back to the site plan. So if you count the sections, you got, you know how far it is out to Meteor Crater, correct? So it's more than twice that far. This one would be a little closer, but each of these would be a mile. So I don't expect a 200-foot tall, very thin tower to be visible from, from the interstate.
Okay.
At that point.
And I, I know this is a really off-the-wall question, but have we ever considered asking the, that the data collected by these towers be shared with folks like the National Weather Service or things like that to help with predictions?
No, we haven't, we haven't done that. It's just something that really hasn't come up. And it's, I imagine it's proprietary information and the applicant may not want to share that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Just, does commission have any more questions of staff? Okay, seeing none, then I would like to ask the applicant or the applicant's representative if they would like to address the commission and have received the staff report and agree with the conditions. If so, please state your name and address and proceed with your comments. Mr. McNeely, is the applicant present, do you know?
Ma'am, I'm sure, yeah, I see, yep, I see Jill Graham, she just, she just, go ahead, Jill.
Hi, my name is Jill Graham, 1319 North Navajo Drive, Flagstaff, Arizona. Um, myself and the applicant AES has reviewed the conditions of approval and we agree with everything there and in the staff report.
Okay, great. All right, then I will open it up for public. If anyone in the public wishes to address the commission on this particular application, please raise your hand. Not seeing any, so I'm going to close the public comment period and open it up for commission discussion. Commissioner Ruggles?
Thank you. One thing I would like to say is something that I, I have to address, and that is the fact that I did visit the site with Mr. Short. And one comment on the visibility, I think that is best illustrated by the two of us being in the same place and looking south. I could see the, the windmill, the northern windmills from the, the wind farm over south of Winslow, whereas Mr. Short couldn't. So it is a relative thing in terms of the visual acuity that some people may or may not have. It's a relative thing. I just had to get that in there because I could see them quite clearly and quite plainly. My long-range vision is exceptionally good, so there is a difference. Otherwise, I can make findings. I would like to say that if there's any concern about what happens when those met towers are put in place, these are typical of others on ranching property like this. There are numerous roads that are used by the ranchers in places like this. Met towers are readily accessible right off the road in almost every instance, so the impact is extremely low for the met towers. Okay, enough said.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Ruggles. Commissioner Best?
Yeah, since we've just had a case where we have visibility issues, I see that this is 10 miles from Route 40. And I don't know if that's officially a scenic highway or not. Looks like it's about five miles from 87. And certainly 10 miles from 487, Lake Mary Road. Do we know if 87 is a scenic highway?
Mr. McNeely?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Best, no, 87 is not designated as a, as a scenic highway.
Okay. Okay, well, I just mentioned this for all the ears listening because we, those of us who approved the brick installation were surprised by how visible it was compared to what we were anticipating from the photo sims. And so personally, I can say I'm going to be a little more careful. The fact that it's 10 miles south of Route 40 is a good thing, and I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Best. Vice Chair Wilson, you have your hand up?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm curious to know conditions, and towers are cited in accordance with those requirements.
Well, Commissioner Wilson, these are extremely large properties. So if you look at the white now in the blue area right here, it, there would be potential, it's, this is just a, it's a very isolated area. And we haven't actually taken that into account before, just because they're, they're in such isolated areas. And it isn't in our ordinance. It's specifically in our ordinance for communication towers, but not, for telecommunications towers, but not for these.
So potentially, these towers where they're currently cited could fall onto property not owned by the applicant?
I would, I would ask that the, the applicant might be able to address that better than I can, but it would be pretty isolated and I can't see that there, you know, there's potential that there is state trust line here.
This is, this is Rob Gardner of AES. I'd be happy to answer that question. I'm, I'm with the applicant.
Yes, Mr. Gardner, if you want to state your address and then go ahead and answer Vice Chair Wilson's question?
Yep, happy to. So again, this is Rob Gardner, address 282 Century Place, Lewisville, Colorado 80027. And thank you Commissioners for your time and hearing this application. So these met towers are all sighted on private property and the nearest non-participating land ownership is further than the 60-meter height of the towers. So if the towers were to fall down, they would still be contained within the private property owned by the landowners where the met tower is located.
Excellent, thank you very much.
No problem. Thank you.
All right, let's continue down on the Commissioner list here and get some, some more comments if you can make the findings. Commissioner Williams?
I can make the findings for this.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Williams. Commissioner Tohe?
I can make the findings as well. I do not have any concerns. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Walsh?
I can make the findings, thank you.
Okay, and this is Chair Burton. I also can make the findings. So if, if there's no further discussion from the commission, then I would entertain a motion and a second.
Okay, I'll go ahead and initiate a motion. Would move to approve Case CUP 24-044.
I will second that.
Okay, that was at exactly the same time. Let, let's go with Commissioner Best as the second. Okay, so I have a motion by Commissioner Ruggles and a second by Commissioner Best for approval of CUP 24044. All those in favor, Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Tohe?
Aye.
Commissioner Walsh?
Aye.
Vice Chair Wilson?
Aye.
And this is Chair Burton. I also vote aye. Motion passes. Okay, let's move on to the final case of the evening, that is ZZ 24005 and CUP 24034. Staff, if you'd like to proceed?
Thanks, Madam Chair, and thanks, Bob, for sharing your screen. Go ahead and give the presentation. Thanks, Madam Chair, and thanks, Bob, for sharing your screen. Go ahead and give the presentation, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the commission, uh, this case is the Grand Canyon Inn and Cabins. ZC twenty-four zero five and CUP twenty-four zero three four. In this case, the property owner is Grand Canyon Hospitality LLC of Anaheim, California. Advocate is Guy Eklund and Tony Cullen from the office of Tony Cullen, Flagstaff, Arizona. Current zoning is G, that's general, the ten acre minimum parcel size. The location of the property is at three one seven South Route sixty-four in Valley. The size of the property is five point seven six acres. And the request is a zone change from general to CG ten thousand and a conditional use permit for an RV park. And I want to point out that the reason this CUP is required is because it's adjacent to a, another G-zone property to the north. Otherwise, it would be permitted by right. There's a vicinity map showing the subject property. You can see it right here in the middle of Valley. This is, um, Hobby one eighty in the intersection of sixty-four right here, so it's right in the middle of this kind of commercial area. This is an aerial photo showing the subject property. You can see the old hotel. Uh, two different pieces of it built at different times, and this is the area up here. This is a storage area that is supposed to be more rooms, five more rooms in the hotel. Sign is like right in here, and in this area at the back, uh, would be the RV park. You can see that this is a taxiing runway, uh, planes circulate out of here and go down to the end here and take off from there. So it is a taxiing runway. This is not one where you would take off or land. This is some background on this property. In nineteen seventy-three, a cuff was approved, a CUP was approved, uh, allowing overnight travel trailers and office groceries, curio shop and a land sales office. So quite a few, uh, commercial uses have been, uh, conducted on this property over the years. In nineteen seventy-eight and nineteen seventy-nine, a gas station and a fifteen-room motel was added. In nineteen eighty-five, thirteen additional rooms are added to the motel. And then in the early nineties, all of the uses were abandoned except for the hotel. And this is a current photo of that hotel. This is the first fifteen rooms that were added originally in nineteen seventy-nine. And these are the rooms, the thirteen rooms that were added later. And the, this is, uh, this is the proposed development. Uh, first of all, retain the twenty-eight room motel. And all, and, uh, remodel the existing storage building into five motel rooms. Uh, add a fifty-unit RV park with park models for short-term rentals. Uh, this meets the requirements, the density requirements, which are twelve, uh, spaces per acre. They also are, need to, of course, add an alternative wastewater system to support the RV park. And they recently in, actually installed a well on this property to provide potable water. Uh, there are two requested waivers. The first one is to allow modifications to an historic legal non-conforming sign. And the second one is a waiver to fencing and buffering requirements, uh, to the abutting residential zone property to the north. And this is a site plan showing the proposal, so you can see the existing hotel up here. And there are fifty spaces for RVs. This is the area for the septic system, the drain system, drain, the, the drain field. Uh, the applicant is proposing a six-foot cedar fence along this property line. This is closest to the runway. On this side, there is already a barbed wire fence. They would make it into a wildlife-friendly fence. And that would be retained on this side. And then up in this area, there is already an existing, I believe, six-foot cedar fence as well. Now, on this side, which would be adjacent to the residential, the applicant is uh, proposing a split rail fence in lieu of the buffering fence required. And this is the, uh, park model that they're looking at, or kind of an example of one they might use. There is also, uh, additional landscaping is proposed, and this is some of the proposed landscaping. It would be drought-tolerant landscaping. Okay, so this is some information about the buffering between zones. In section four point eight and also in table four eleven, it requires, first of all, a twenty-foot buffer to residential land. This is from commercial land to residential. It requires twenty-foot buffer, ten-foot landscape strip and a six-foot wall or fence. Uh, in lieu of that, as I said, the applicant requests a split rail fence. And staff recommends approval of this waiver request, and that's basically because the property to the north is not really viable for residential development. It's in the G-zone, which means they can only put one unit on the property. It, um, is actually very viable and very appropriate for commercial zoning. It's right in the middle of the commercial area of Valley, and that would make a lot of sense. And the project also meets all the other landscaping and fencing requirements of the county. And this is a zoning map to show the zoning around the subject property. As you can see, the property to the north, this is the residential property. That is the whole reason this requires a conditional use permit, so it's a vacant property. And it's been vacant for a long time, so this would be where that, uh, split rail fence would go in lieu of the buffering standard. And as you can see, there is a J, Jason CG ten thousand property to the south. And obviously, this is right in the middle of Valley, so there's a lot of commercial property at that level all around it. This is a, a picture of the property line, basically looking north, so that is that vacant property to the north. You can also see Raptor Ranch, uh, or that, or also what was Bedrock up here to the north across the other side of the property. Also viable, that would be a, a viable property for commercial, uh, zone change, since it's been commercial for a long time as well. This is the back of the property. You can see the water tank and, uh, this, the, this development would be removed prior to development with the RV park. So this goes quite a bit further back than this. Over on this side, you're looking at some, uh, I believe it's warehousing. It could also be, uh, places to store aircraft, so some hangars for aircraft over here. So, uh, this is the property line with the airport right here. And this shows kind of that center area where they would be remodeling this storage area for, uh, five new rooms for the motel. And you can see there's quite a bit of existing landscaping, and they're proposing some supplementary landscaping to go with this to meet standards. This is the existing sign at the motel that the applicant is re, is, uh, requesting to retain. And this, this is something like what the applicant has, uh, proposed for, for the sign. We did, uh, discuss this with the applicant today, and they are asking that they might get a little flexibility for this. It might be better that they just kind of retain this sign and, uh, kind of change it a little bit to meet their current needs, or maybe a different kind of sign, and we'll discuss that in a minute. Terms of citizen participation, the applicant held a neighborhood meeting across the street in, uh, the restaurant that the owner also owns, and that was in March twenty-six, twenty twenty-four. They had twelve community members attend the meeting and sign in. Uh, I believe others were present as well. They just didn't sign in. Attendees provided comments about landscaping, plans for water and wastewater fire protection, and the type of proposed park models they would use. And as you have seen, uh, staff received sixteen comments and a petition signed by twenty-one people in support of the application, and also four comments opposed. You received those four comments, I believe, in the last couple of days through email. Uh, and the supporters, um, cited the improved aesthetic the project provides to the area. It is, uh, kind of an dilapidated pro, uh, property at this point, so this would provide for quite a bit nicer development. Um, and also the appropriate location of this project right in this Valley commercial area. Those objecting to the project cited the density of the project and also some safety issues related to the proximity to the airport. And this is staff's analysis of this case. Uh, so first of all, the zone change provides zoning entitlements to a property that has contained commercial uses for several decades. So it's, uh, it's always good from a, from staff's perspective to, uh, change zoning to what is actually being done on a property, and this is a, a very appropriate place for that. And the conditional use permit provides for redevelopment of the property. Uh, that will improve the condition of the site and the commercial center of Valley, so it adds to that commercial center. As I said, it's kind of a little dilapidated at this point and does need some, you know, upgrades. The project is also consistent with comp plan policies. Uh, and that's related to fire protection, tourist-related developments, community character, and, uh, well-designed communities in areas where services are available. And that is a big plus. They have water on the property and other services available. Project's also consistent with the Valley area plan policies related to the visual appearance of highway development and impacts of the proposed use on area residents. So they did get quite a bit of support from area residents. And of course, obviously, this is going to improve the appearance of this property from the highway for people that pass by. And this is the one condition change that, um, the applicant has requested. Basically, it says that, uh, the applicant can install a sign that looks like the one I showed you a minute ago, or as approved by the director. And the reason for that is just to give them more flexibility. There aren't really design standards in this area. And they would like some more, uh, flexibility as to what kind of sign that they put up here. These are the findings for a conditional use permit. And I have addressed those in the staff report, uh, along with the findings for a zone change. I just realized I don't have those here. And with that, staff recommends the commission approves CUP twenty-four zero three four and forwards a recommendation of approval of ZC twenty-four zero zero five to the board of supervisors with the recommended conditions. And with that, I'll take any questions from the commission.
Okay, uh, first up is Commissioner Best.
Thank you, Madam Chair. New Madam Chair, um. Some of the, uh, folks who objected, um, cited safety concerns, and I think that is a reasonable concern. We've got a six-foot fence uh, across the short back of the property that that borders the airport, but I think also the southern boundary also borders airport property. Um, is there a secondary fence owned by the airport that would keep, for instance, uh, if there were kids going exploring from from, uh, you know, a, a vacation cottage on this property, uh, would they run into something that would let them know not to go any farther?
Uh, Commissioner Best, yes, there is a four, there's an existing four-foot, um, I believe it's barbed wire, but it, it, the applicant has proposed to change it to a wildlife-friendly fence, so that is there. And I think some of the issue, uh, with the applicant was they did discuss, um, these issues with the airport representatives on a few occasions, and the applicant is prepared to talk about that a little bit, but I think the what, uh, what they came to was that the fence, there is a requirement that the FAA has for a fence. And that would be an eight-foot fence with barbed wire on top. And, uh, I think the, the thought was that that was something that would be more of the, uh, airport's responsibility than the applicant's responsibility, since it, that is required by the FAA. So I think that was kind of the issue with it, but there is an existing fence to answer your question, yes.
Okay, so it sounds like a question for the applicant again.
I think so, yes.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Wilson or Vice Chair Wilson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Mr. Short, would the existing properties be required to be brought up to current code as a part of this process? It appears there's a, one structure that is currently in use that might be fairly well-preserved. Another structure that is going to have to be significantly reconditioned, will that be to code?
Uh, Commissioner Wilson? So first of all, this is, this is a zone change, so the zone change would allow the existing uses in, uh, the existing hotel be permitted by right. And then, of course, the CUP is required for the RV park at the back. So it, it comes down to any kind of building permits that they submit at that point that would, uh, trigger staff to look at that, look at non-conforming issues and what kind of things would be brought up to code. Uh, because of the RB, the RV park, that, that, uh, does bring into play um, standards such as landscaping, and they are meeting those standards. Also, the buffer that they're, um, asking a waiver for, so those are the standards that we're looking at from the zoning ordinance. The building standards would be different. For example, if they, if they add those fiber rooms, then there's quite a bit that the building division would be looking at through a building permit to approve that.
Okay, um, the split rail fence to the north, um, you're suggesting that that shouldn't, or that waiver should be allowed because that property is not viable as residential property, is, is what I heard. Is that correct?
Uh, yes, that, that and the fact that the most likely development on that property will be commercial, so you're, uh, buffering requirement is, is to residential property.
Except that, okay, except that, um, airport communities are, are fairly common now where folks want direct access to airports from their residential property. Um, you know, pilots. So in, in that case, a residential uh, building on that site would be completely consistent. Would you agree?
Well, in, so with the current zoning, we, we have general zone there now. That's a ten acre minimum parcel size, and the only thing that would be allowed would be a, um, one unit, basically a house and a guest house. So it's not really viable in the location it is for that. And the most likely thing, I mean, it's a, to do anything more than that would require another zone change. But it, uh, it, since there, it's a vacant property, there's never been development on it before. Uh, staff felt it, that would, it was appropriate to, um, recommend the waiver in this case.
But if I was a retiring airline pilot and wanted to buy that property, I could do that and have direct access to an airport for my airplane. And that would be consistent with the rights of the land as it exists today.
Yeah, certainly, you could build a house and a guest house on the property, right?
Okay. The, the park homes that- Okay. The park homes that are being installed, the plan apparently is, is this isn't really an RV park in the sense that it would be people visiting with their RVs. Instead, it's a park, or it's a facility that's going to use park home-type RVs to rent on daily or whatever basis. Is that a correct assumption?
Commissioner Wilson, yes, it's a fairly common use of an RV park. We call it an RV park. In this case, it serves quite a bit as the similar use to the hotel motel. But it is RVs, so it's part model RVs. So you can think of it as being short-term rentals. So yeah, it's not for people to come in and come out. So it is stationary, and the units would be a little bit nicer than the middle-sided RVs.
It's really a whole collection of small hotel rooms. Okay, thank you. And then the roads, could you go back to the plat map that shows the development? There you go. The roads that are proposed here are, do they meet the minimum standards for fire equipment, turn radiuses, and things like that?
That is my understanding. They have been working with High Country Fire Rescue on this. There is a condition that requires them to obtain fire service from High Country Fire Rescue. So the applicant could talk more about this probably, but that's something that would need to be approved by the fire chief.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Short.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilson.
Are there any other commissioners with questions for staff? Okay, seeing none, I would like to ask if the applicant or the applicant's representative would like to address the commission and that they have received the staff report and could agree with the conditions. If you could please state your name and address and proceed with your comments.
Madam Chairman, this is Tony Cullum, 14 East Dale, Flagstaff, Arizona. I'm the attorney for the project. We'd want to thank the county for a wonderful staff report. They hit everything. We agreed everything in the staff report. And as far as proceeding from there, we want to go through a couple of points if we could. First of all, the first thing we did on the project, because we really wanted to clean this project up and make it a nice project, and it's in the right place. It's downtown, and this is exactly where this type of development should be. The first thing we did was we met with the fire department, and Chief Trotter, who was very busy, gave us his time, came out, walked the property, went through everything, and made major changes to our plan, our roads, everything else, and approved it all. By the way, he is sharp as a tack, because while he was there, he took Raj Patel, who is actually the owner of Grand Canyon Hospitality, one of them, and took him across the road, and they talked. And when the day was over, Chief Trotter went home with a free and clear donated one-acre parcel of land for the fire department. So if we need to have a fire engine screaming from the Spring Valley Road, Hocker Road area to do an emergency in the Valley area, you won't have to do that. It's going to have a second office and a second facility right there in Valley. So that actually turned out wonderful, and so we made those changes to the plans, and those were submitted to the county with all the safety changes already made. The second thing we did, Madam Chairman, was we brought out ADOT, and we walked the whole property with ADOT and had them look at everything. And basically, after they looked at all their daily trips and all the information they had on this road and where it was located and everything, they said, here's what we'd like to do with the change in the plans. We'd liked, you've got an access on the north, and you've got an access on the south, and the big access is the one on the north. So what we'd like you to do is abandon the one on the south, and let's put it all in strong on the north with all of the requirements of the width and length and size and things of that nature, and that'll take care of it. So we also have approval from ADOT, and they have also made major changes on the plans. The other thing we'd like to bring up is that there is a building on the front part of the property that has been used for a number of different commercial purposes. That has been, that is being turned into workforce housing, not necessarily housing in our area, but anywhere in the Valley, workforce housing, and that will have five major units in that workforce housing that will go with the project. Also, the landscaping is really cleaning up the project, and we've had some wonderful help from the people. We'd like to thank, first of all, Bob Short from the county and Jess McNeely, who did a wonderful job and spent a lot of time looking at this project and looking at the changes we made as we cleaned up the safety issues and the traffic issues and things of that nature. The other thing we'd like to thank is the people in the area who basically helped us. I mean, Raptor Ranch did an excellent job, the old bedrock, Double Eagle Trading Post. In fact, most of the businesses and most of the people really came out in support. When we submitted our application, we had twenty-one petition signatures and thirteen letters, all fully in support. From that point in time, we've had people sobbing by the project, and we've had six more people and families and businesses wanting support. So that's up to twenty-seven on the petitions and thirteen on the letters. The one thing, the rest of our project team, let me tell you a little bit about them. I have in my office here today Guy Eklund, who's also the project paralegal. I have Jeff Smith, who's a project manager, and also we've got Dan Smith, who's a project designer. And what they're all telling us is very simply that everything is going to be brought up to code. So even though we're not to that point yet, as Bob pointed out, everything will be cleaned up. It will all be brought up to code. It will all be first class. And we won't have any concerns with our new plans or anything of that nature. As far as the fencing is concerned, our position is this. Our fencing contractor came out and took a look at everything, and at the back of the property where we have a somewhat of a runway behind that, they came up with cedar solid wood fence. They're going to have a total of six-foot or bigger solid wood fence, and it's going to be one that you cannot get over and you can't see through. And there's going to be no way to get over the rest of the fences that we're putting up also. So anyone coming, say, to the runway will not be coming through our property, and we'll have no trespass signs all the way around on all of our fences. We've got a totally self-contained project, and it will not bleed outside of that. Let me do this with your permission. Let me turn it over to Guy Eklund, who's been actually working on the project on a day-to-day basis up there, and have him give you the comments on what we just heard. Guy?
Okay. Just a couple of things. I just wanted to, this Guy Eklund, Al Office, Tony Cullum, 14 East Dale. Can you all see the cursor that I'm moving?
Yes, we can.
So I just wanted to point out, this is the subject property, and just to the north here is Raptor Ranch. And it's my understanding, I'm being told that they're being rezoned to bring their property into conformance with the Valley Area Plan and bring this into more of a commercial zoning. Over here, and they have a number of similar types.
Yes, sir. I'm sorry to interrupt, Mr. Eklund, but we're not seeing your cursor. Bob is moving his to a specific location, so.
Okay, so he's got it at Raptor Ranch. I wanted you guys to, wanted everyone to know where Raptor Ranch is. And then to the west, across the runway, is a number of, is under canvas where there's numerous glamping tents that are rented out on a commercial basis around the, near the runway. And just to the south of, under canvas, is the Valley Air Park, which is my understanding, they have about a hundred, approximately a hundred houses there where folks are living in the community. And so there's a number of similar type of residences or units around the runway. One thing we wanted to point out is the code does not require any fencing adjacent to the airport or commercial properties. The only fencing that was required when we looked at, we did the planning review was the fence along the north property line adjacent to the G General zoned residential property, and that was just because it was, that property is zoned residential. But despite that, we are proposing a six-foot solid fence along the west boundary and fencing split rail along the north, wire fencing, a combination of wire and cedar fencing along the south boundary.
Okay. And also, Madam Chairman, this is Tony. We have in our office the Dan Smith, Jeff Smith, and also we have on the line available Raj Patel, the owner, if there are any questions that anyone wants to ask any of us. And I think that would conclude our presentation, madam.
Okay. It looks like we do have Commissioner Best with his hand raised with a question for you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, if I'm a kid or a dog, I want to go explore and play. There's a little setback from the airport on the northwest corner of the proposed project, and that, I understand that the whole west side would be the six-foot wooden fence. But right at the corner, the southwest corner of the property, you're within feet of the runway. So from a health and safety point of view, I think it would be a good idea to have a fence there that is impenetrable to kids and dogs, both protect the aircraft and involving the dogs, mostly, but certainly the kids. So is that impenetrable? You said it was wood and wire.
So, this is Tony. What we'll do, if you've got a concern on that at all, is we'll go ahead and take that solid back fence that goes all the way across that back wall, and we'll bring it down that area on that side, all the way down to the existing fence that's there from the other neighbor. So we'll take that six-foot solid wood cedar fence and take it all the way down that area.
I love your enthusiasm, and I will go, I will go back to sleep. Thank you, Tony.
Thank you, sir.
On that note, I have, I'll get to Vice Chair Wilson in a moment. On that note, I would also be curious if you'd be willing to do that corner on the north part as well, because that seems like the same thing could happen on that side if we're just going to have a split rail on that side. That does leave it open for potential trespass, which is a concern of mine.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. We're having a discussion right now with the project manager and the engineer, so hang on for just a second.
Are you okay to bring that across? I mean, no one else has a six-foot fence in that whole area.
Mr. Cullum, you might want to mute your mic momentarily.
Madam Chairman, we're putting a quick call through to the owner, Raj Patel.
Are you okay with?
And we'll be back to you in just a second, please.
And I'm not talking about the whole north boundary. I'm talking about just kind of wrapping it around that corner just a little ways, just to add a little extra break right there, impenetrable.
This is Guy Eklund. I just spoke with the applicant, and he's okay with that. He agrees to do that.
Okay, that makes me feel much better, because like Commissioner Best mentioned, even with that lower corner, the upper one is not that far off either, and we would hate to see a dog or somebody or a kid run out there. So, okay, Vice Chair Wilson, did you have additional questions for the applicant?
I do. Thank you very much, Madam Chair. First, just so everyone is clear, there's only one runway at this airport. It's runway one and one-nine. It's the one running pretty much north-south. The rest of what appears to be runway here is actually taxiway, so if aircraft that would be on those areas would be moving at a much slower pace. So with respect to safety concerns, I think that helps a little bit. I do have a question for the applicant regarding that building they're planning to convert to workforce housing. Workforce housing is different than a motel. It's different than an RV park. It's, you know, this sounds like something different completely. Are there different codes? Are there different requirements for something that's permanent like that versus a motel room? Can Mr. McNeely or the applicant address that question?
Yes, you want to answer that, or you want me to?
Sure. Well, I mean, I'd be happy to hear what the applicant has to say. We see a lot of projects. We've seen a lot of, we've seen several commercial redevelopment projects of historic hotels, such as we're looking at today, where they've converted, where they've taken their hotel rooms and just used them, install a kitchenette, which you can do in a hotel room, and it's their choice if they wanted to use it for a longer term. So when they go to their building permit phase, they've got to indicate, you know, with their designer for a commercial project, which does require a licensed professional, what the occupation use of the unit is. You know, is it hotel motel, short-term, or is it long-term? So we've certainly seen similar projects. We had one on eighty-nine that where basically the hotel room was just permitted as a hotel room. However, it has a kitchenette in it, and it gets used for month-to-month workforce housing rental.
Okay, thank you for that. And I would say as part of, well, we'll wait till further discussion here. So thank you for those answers. I appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, just very briefly, this is a older unit that's already there. It's in good shape. It looks nice. We're going to put it into five units, all specific units that are going to be totally separate and livable, and that's going to be for the workforce housing in the Valley area, not just for ours, but for any workforce housing. And it's not going to be tied to our other units or our other, the park models or the motel at all. It's going to be totals. Park models or, 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 or the motel at all. It's going to be totals, five total separate units that the workforce housing and their families can live in.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Um, if our commissioners don't have any further questions for the applicant, are there any before we move on? Not seeing any. So I'm going to go ahead and open this for public discussion. So if anyone in the public would like to comment, if you could please raise your hand and, um, I will call on you, uh, one at a time and you will be limited to three minutes. And, um, yeah, so let's go ahead and get started. It looks like I have a Corbin Keely. As first, please state your name and address and proceed with your comments.
I think, uh, Norm Gobill, is that what you said?
Um, yeah, I, I see, I see a name Corbin Keely on the.
Yeah.
So whoever, whoever's there, you were first to raise your hand. So if you want to go ahead and state your name and address and, and you can proceed with your comments.
Okay, thank you. My name's Norm Gobill. Uh, nine oh eight West Murray Road, Flagstaff, Arizona, eight six zero zero one. Uh, just so you know, I had a stroke, so I kind of screw up sometime, but I have my daughter might help me if I need to. I've been the manager of Valley Airport for almost thirty years. I love the idea of housing in Valley. I was the chairman of the Valley Airport Planning Committee for twenty-five years ago. We would never approved this, to have an airport with th- so much space, three acres to have sixty houses. I understand we're talking about pets and children. They'll go over the airport sooner or later. That is a bad thing to do. It's terrible. I mean, if you look at the, the pictures I've sent you, we have, the taxi is thirty feet away from that piece of land. It really doesn't make sense. We have six thousand uts.
Lots.
Lots. And Valley, that just doesn't make sense. Put it somewhere else. Why on the airport? That just doesn't make sense. My daughter's gonna ask a question. I'm slowing down here. Go ahead.
Well, we were just going to say too, with the density of the, the number of houses in such a small space. I know you guys mentioned earlier, like Valley Air Park and that's, it is a hundred spaces, but it's on sixty acres. And then under canvas, it's very spread out on, oh, I can't find the how many acres, but it's two acres for one house is how spread out those ones are. So I guess it's just having so many people. Um, yeah, I think the under canvases a hundred and eighty-one acres for ninety houses. Um, and then on this one, I know even earlier you guys mentioned that it's twelve spaces per acre, but I think that that's maybe taking the whole acreage with the number of houses, you know, just the park models, not taking that there's into account, there's also a hotel on the property. And, um, you know, these other, you know, now these other five houses that people are going to live full-time in and the hotels. So.
Just so you know, I mean, I cannot believe, um, that children and pets sooner or later, they'll go with that fence and someone's going to get hurt. And I just, tappons, uh, helicopters, that's just, that's a bad idea.
Desert, you're just about out of time with your three minutes.
I'm done.
Okay. Thank you, uh, for your comments. Uh, the next one, I, I have a Jessica Boyce. If you would like to state your name and address and go ahead and address the commission.
So sorry, that was actually Jessica Boyce and Norm Gobill.
Okay, okay. So you're, so you're good. Um, okay. The next person that I have on the list is a, please forgive me if I butcher the name, uh, Sham, uh.
Yes. Uh, hello, good evening, uh, ma'am and good evening, everybody. Uh, my name is Sham Candedia. I am the general manager of the property Grand Canyon Inn. And, uh, first of all, it's an honor to speak in front of you all and share my point of view.
Can you state your address for the record?
Yeah, the address is, uh, unit eighty-three Sage Valley, uh, Williams, Arizona, eight six zero four zero, uh, sorry, eight three zero four six. Um, and, uh, uh, so the first of all, um, the only thing I would suggest and I would like to share is that like in our property is like in a mall, uh, CCTV monitored twenty-four by seven and we have coverage all over the property. And also, uh, the other point of view, we only have tourists. People come with family to visit Grand Canyon. And usually we only have nightly rentals, uh, like, you know, people come here to stay for overnight. And they come here to see sunset sunrise. So usually people, when they come after the sunset, um, and usually they go to see sunrise. Um, that's for, because like, you know, the Grand Canyon is a complete tourist attraction. So I don't, we, um, and last, like, you know, two, we almost two years I've been managing this hotel, I have never seen people staying in the hotel for the entire day. Usually all they come here to the hotel is just for, um, the nightly stay. And that's what we are going and we are planning to see and do the same thing at, um, the new planning, which we're, what we are planning to do. So that's the only thing, um, and it would be more profit, uh, more luxurious and more, uh, amenities we're going to offer. And, uh, I don't think there would be any people, uh, during the daytime, because most of the time whoever is going to come here, they are going to visit Grand Canyon, um, uh, because all of them are traveling with their family, as I mentioned earlier. So that would be the only thing I would like to share and, uh, put my point on. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Um, if, if you have already spoken, if you all could please lower your hands, if you've already been able to address us. Um, the next person I see is, uh, Greg Lightborn. If you would like to address the commission, uh, please state your name and address and you may proceed.
Yes, hello, Greg Lightborn, five 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 South State Route sixty-four. And, um, I, uh, am also affiliated with the airport. No, no, I, I don't really quite understand why this is being called an RV park. Because this is not an RV park that they're proposing to put in. This, these are permanent structures. Nobody can come in with an RV and get a space. And, uh, unless that's only just to, you know, appease the, uh, twelve, twelve spaces per acre, which it isn't even twelve spakers, uh, spaces per acre. I mean, the, the development that they're talking about putting that, uh, density on is, is only really three acres of that property. And, and it is all as, as, uh, Mr. Gobill said earlier, very, very close to the airport. And I'm, I'm, uh, heartened to hear that they would extend the cedar fence, uh, de- along the south side. That would be, that would be best for everybody. Um, but, uh, this, this density is just, I mean, there is the, to, if it's just to get the, uh, zone change, uh, to call it an RV park, it, it really isn't an RV park. They're talking about putting permanent structures there. And, and it's, you know, it's really just kind of a, a crazy thing to do that close to an airport where, and even on a taxiway, uh, a plane that's going along the taxiway, the propeller is the dan- the most dangerous thing on that, on that aircraft. And so if a kid is running across there trying to get their dog or, or anything like that, I mean, it's a safety issue. And I don't really understand why they wouldn't go with just wire fence, TSA wire fence, because that is actually cheaper than, than a cedar fence. And, and so if they're going to be doing that, why wouldn't they just do it around the whole perimeter of the property? I mean, it just seems a little bit, uh, crazy. And that's really all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Um, it looks like the Corbin Keely still has their hands raised. If you could please lower your hand. Is there anyone else in the public that has not yet addressed the commission that would like to do so on this case? Okay. Seeing none, I'm going to close the public comment section and, um, open this to commission discussion. Um, I would like to ask Mr. McNeely if he could briefly address a few of the concerns of gar- regarding the density and the rights per acre and lots and stuff like that, as well as um, responsibilities as far as fencing and things like that. So, Mr. McNeely, are you able to address, um, the concerns that were raised?
Sure, Madam Chair, and I'll, and I'll let, uh, Bob, um, chime in as well. You, you might, there's some, there's some chat about a, a, uh, member of the public who already spoke wanting to address again. So I think it'd be important to note that everyone just gets the opportunity during the public hearing to speak once. And then the, and now the public hearing is closed. Um, but, uh, the zoning ordinance, the county zoning ordinance, um, has a, has a, um, density limit for RV parks to twelve per acre. And what's being requested here, uh, is, is certainly under, under that density. Otherwise, um, in commercial zoning, such as the hotel motel, there's no limit. Typically the natural limits of a, of the zoning are what limit the development of the property. Um, you have building setbacks, you have parking requirements, you have building height limits, and then you have building code to meet. Um, and as we know in all of these areas where there's not a community or public wastewater system, you've got to be able to fit, um, all of the things you need on a site, including, um, including wastewater. So typically just having the wastewater requirement on a site, uh, does in fact limit how much development you can get on any site. So, um, the zoning ordinance, uh, nor do any county regulations, uh, address density abutting a, um, uh, an airport or any, any form of, of air facility. We, you know, we do list, um, airport in, in the zoning ordinance as a permitted use. Um, we would point out that, um, the, the Flintstones property has, has, has existed immediately north of the subject property, um, for decades, um, as in RV park and a camping property and a tourist property, um, uh, without, um, as we understand in any issues or problems. Um, likewise, under canvases on the opposite side of the, um, of the airport, um, in both of those considerations, say, uh, Flintstones, that actually has never, you know, that's, that's so historic, um, it's legal non-conforming. It's also in the G-zone like our subject property. Um, so that never came before the commission or the board, uh, uh, or, or, or was analyzed with zoning ordinance, uh, as, as far as its proximity to, um, the airfield. But, um, we did do the zone change, uh, for under canvas, uh, just a few years ago, and there, there was no issue. There is no regulation under the county for, um, density of camping units or RVs or hotel motel uses in proximity to an airport. If there is a FAA federal requirement, um, that's not something, uh, that the, um, that the airport has brought up, um, nor has the applicant brought that up as well. Uh, the county's not aware of that. Likewise, the fencing, as, as the applicant has stated, um, uh, the, the zoning ordinance, um, fencing requirement is for the purpose of visual screening. And that is when you abut, when a commercial property abuts a residential zone property, assuming it will be, um, developed with residences. We, we have a good idea that the property immediately north of the subject property, um, which is a vacant G-zone property that is now, that is sandwiched between two commercial properties. Uh, we don't see that being, um, developed with a residence. Um, so a- as it would be, um, better suited along highway sixty-four, be developed commercially. Uh, so that's where the only fencing requirement would be under the county's zoning ordinance. Uh, the applicant obviously offered to fence, uh, their west and south property lines where they abut the, um, the airport property. Um, but that's by the zoning ordinance, that would not be required. That does seem to make sense. Um, and then when it comes to whatever the FAA requirement is for a height and say, um, barriers at the top of a fence, um, that, that burden would actually be on the airport to provide that fence, um, to keep trespassers off of their property for safety purposes. Um, certainly under the county's zoning ordinance regulations, um, the requirement to fence wouldn't be on, in this instance, a commercial lodging property, um, to, uh, to provide that fencing. Um, however, common, uh, as you all know, commissioners, um, to put in some common sense, uh, safety measures with, with properties like this to try to keep, try to prevent trespass essentially. Um, and that's certainly what the, what the applicant is attempting to do. Uh, with that, uh, Chair Burton, did that answer your questions?
It did. Can you also, um, just briefly address, um, why this is considered, being considered as an RV park?
Absolutely. So Park Model RV is in fact a recreational vehicle. It is built to, uh, either ANSI or REVA, those are a couple of acronyms for, um, for, uh, RV recreational vehicle codes. Essentially the same code that you're, um, that a fifth wheel travel trailer camper is built to. Um, we have several projects in the county, the Muns Park RV Park that we're all familiar with on the west side of I seventeen in the Muns Park area, that is fully developed with Park Model RVs. Um, we have a newer project, uh, west on I forty, on the north side of I forty in the Belmont area. Village Camp also developed with Park Model RVs, um, because these are built to an RV code. Um, and they typically, it can be moved, they can be easily moved off, off of the property. Um, they stay on a chassis where you could attach wheels and, and move them off. And, and in the cases of those other two, um, uh, commercial development properties I, I referred to in Belmont and Muns Park, you do see park models move on or off. Um, so because the unit being used is technically an RV, that is why, um, we classify this development as including an RV park. So an RV park, as stated, can be permanent RVs, that are, are RVs that are provided by the property owner that are, that are short-term rented or, uh, an RV park, as we're all familiar with, that, um, an individual RV owner could pull in and out. And we clearly see what the applicant has, has chosen to pursue as their business model in this application. Does that answer your question, Chair Burton?
Yes, it does. Thank you for adding the additional clarification for public record. Um, okay. So let's have commission discussion. Um, Commissioner Ruggles, do you want to start us off?
Okay, will do. Thank you very much. It appears to me that the fencing issue is the, uh, major problem that we have to deal with here. Uh, I think, uh, Mr. McNeely and also, uh, Mr. Eklund, who works for Tony Cullen, uh, have, uh, made a case that it is arguable that, uh, fencing, the taxiway that, along that side of the airport is the airport's responsibility in order to keep people out. Um, I think that, uh, is, uh, something that, uh, might encourage a little more discussion about this. But I think that the applicant, uh, has, um, done quite a bit in terms of addressing this. I think that if the fence is to wrap around and go down along the north side, um, with the cedar fencing, that we probably should consider, uh, coming up with how far that fencing should go. Rather than just leaving it up to going around the corner and along the north side without any discussion about or specifying how far that should go. Uh, otherwise, I think that, uh, my thanks go to Mr. McNeely for bringing up and discussing what an RV park in this sense is with the park models. That was, um, I think, a very good explanation. We've been down this road before some time ago. And thank you for that. Um, at that point, I think, given that, what the applicant has proposed, uh, other than the fencing issue, I think that, uh, this is a pretty good project and I can understand, um, the objections, but nevertheless, we're dealing a commercial property. And the other thing is I've been up, uh, to, um, Valley enough times in the past, uh, to know how well, uh, the applicant's properties are managed over on the, uh, other side of the intersection of sixty-four and one eighty. And I think that, um, the applicant, uh, has pretty good track record in that respect. So with that, I'd be more than happy to turn it over to the rest of the commission. Thank you.
Um, Commissioner Ruggles, just, uh, just a quick question. You had mentioned you would like to discuss how far we would want the, the side fence to go from the rear or from the west side. Um, do you have any thoughts on that?
Well, um, it, it's a little hard to say. I've looked at the, uh, aerial view of the property. One thing I might have to, if I were to suggest a dimension on that, I'd like to take a little bit of time while others discuss aspects of this, take a look at the distance. I can do that pretty quickly, but it would take up a little too much time to look, to do that while everybody else is waiting for me, so.
That's okay. We can come back, we can come back to you. And just out of curiosity, would you be amenable if we were to say at the discretion of the Director of Community Development?
That would probably, probably be the best way to deal with it, I think.
That's, that was kind of my thoughts, but I'd like to hear from
You bet.
commissioners, but, okay, so.
I agree. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ruggles. Commissioner Best, you're up.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I agree on the fencing. The purpose here is safety. It may be that there are some view sheds that on the north and south sides, you know, it might be, feel a little enclosed to have a solid fence all the way around. In my opinions, maybe a five-foot chain link fence would be okay, just something that will keep kids and dogs from getting hurt. Probably the airport should be doing this, but they are not. They're not required to, I suppose, and here we are, working on this project. I would like to discuss our ongoing attempt to educate the public as they use northern Arizona landscapes to recreate and enjoy. We have had over the last three or four years, many, many campgrounds, and we've developed some standards to help educate people to behave themselves in the forest and be safe. So I've got two proposed additional conditions. Number five would be, and I'll do this kind of slowly so you can write it down, it's a long one, but just combining a couple of them. And I would say it's an interesting thing. I know that Melissa Shaw reported a sort of a new element as she went around the county this year, meeting in, you know, all over the county, working on upgrading the, updating the comprehensive plan, that people in the county want educated visitors. It's actually an issue that's come up, which is completely in support of what I'm trying to do here. So number five, applicant shall establish a centrally located bulletin board with leave no trace materials, parentheses, C Center for Outdoor Ethics, parentheses, comma, forest slash grassland ecology educational material to increase awareness of off-site biological impacts.
Commissioner Best, I'm not going to keep, be able to keep up with that. Sorry, I'm really so tight.
Let's go back to.
Start with simply located.
Commissioner Best, why don't you post it in the comments so he can just cut and paste?
There you go. Sounds good.
Okay, I'll read it. So it's on the record. Forest, grassland, ecology, educational material to increase awareness of off-site biological impacts and fire danger, comma, and signage to indicate the current Kaibab National Forest fire danger. And we've been doing that at pretty much every campground and RV site. And I would say, if this is done right, it is both sort of educational, but it should have a positive impact on people. They realize what a cool spot they're standing in, and they want to take care of it and learn more about it. Applicant has agreed to place private property do not enter signs around the perimeter. So I'll make that the applicant will place private property do not enter signs around the perimeter. And if the Director of Community Development wants to let those go because the fence is good enough, that's fine as well. So chat. Okay, I'm looking for chat here. Thank you. Other than that, I support this. Yeah, it's pretty crowded, but I think it's sort of in downtown Valley, and that's not inappropriate, as long as we are safe.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Best. All right, Commissioner Williams.
Um, I can make the findings for this, and I would say as far as the fencing, I would be good with chain link over cedar, because the cedar is just not going to look very good in a few years. And since it's just, it's not, you know, for privacy, it's for safety. If they want to go that route, I would be amenable to that. Other than that, I can make the findings, or I can make the findings, but I would offer another fence option.
Thank you, Commissioner Williams. Do, well, each commissioner can address that. I'm guessing they probably want the fence, the solid fence back there, more for screening their property from the view of the airport, but I think that that is a decision that I don't have a problem if we want to give them the option, but we'll have all the rest of the commissioners weigh in on that. Next, Commissioner Tohe.
Good evening. Can you hear me? I'm on my phone right now.
Yes, we can hear you loud and clear.
Oh, good. I can make the findings and also support the suggestions, recommendations that have been made so far. And as far as the fencing, I would support the more barrier-leaning one where it's more of a solid fence. And I think it's just nice to kind of secure and buffer more for your own property. So, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Tohe. Commissioner Walsh.
Hi, thank you, Madam Chair. I really appreciate all of the discussion and the questions. I think on the site plan, it looks real crowded, but it probably is not as crowded as it looks on paper. I agree with all the safety concerns. However, I believe this is an appropriate use, this zone change, so I can make the findings. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair Wilson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think this is a great opportunity to improve a property that has maybe detracted a little bit from the Valley character for some period of time. But I have a couple of concerns that I would like to address. The first is, as everyone else has said, the fencing. And I think that wrapping that fencing around not just to the north and the south on, from the west side, but actually all the way across on the north side is, in particular, to respect the rights of the property owners to the north is important. I think a chain link fence that is more impenetrable and more maybe deterring in appearance would be the right way to do that. And I think privacy slats in that fence would also contribute to not encouraging folks to want to go to the other side of that fence. The taxiway is so close to this location. We really need to discourage that kind of a thing. And we have to keep in mind, too, that the Valley Airport, although the, you know, 99% of the majority of the aircraft there are small, probably single-engine light aircraft, occasionally gets much larger, heavier aircraft in, and one of those veering off course into a density as high as this location is presents significant risks to the folks that are there. See, visuals, okay. I recognize the airport is under the burden of preventing access to the runway, to the taxiways, those kinds of things. I would hope that perhaps the airport and the applicant could work together on the fence, at least along that western perimeter, to create a fence that achieves what's best for both of them. And I would encourage that. I think that we have a problem as a, in our code, when something that is clearly not a temporary RV park, but is a permanent installation, is being used to maybe circumvent other zoning kinds of circumstances. And I would encourage our community development department to look at whether there's an issue here that could be addressed. And since the applicant has indicated that they want to bring all the buildings on site up to code as part of this CUP and rezone, I would suggest that we should add that as a condition to the approval. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Vice Chair Wilson. This is Chair Burton. Let's see. I love what the development will do, because this is a commercial corridor, and every improvement that's made in this area is just a benefit to the community, aesthetically, providing potentially additional jobs. I would, I think, like to go back around to get the rest of the commissioners' feelings on Commissioner or Vice Chair Wilson's biggest concern with, which is the property rights of the property to the north. Before I do that, Mr. McNeely, did we get any comments from, I don't know off the top of my head, did we get any comments from the property owner to the north?
Madam Chair, I don't believe we did, but Bob, did we get, did we get any comments from the property owner to the north?
I'm not aware of any that we got from them.
The property owner per parcel viewer is Monarch Enterprises Incorporated.
Okay, so very, very likely a commercial development and not any kind of residential. Okay, so now I understand a little better why you are all so convinced that it's going to be commercial development at some point in the future. I think that reduces some of my concern, because it is like a commercial holding company, it sounds like. Otherwise, I was going to say, it may need to be a condition that we readdress in the future should someone decide to put a residential property there. But I would like to know the rest of the commissioners' feelings on this particular subject and anything else they may have, they may want to chime in on from what they've heard. So let's just make one more pass around to the commissioners. Commissioner Ruggles?
Thank you. I'd like to address, well, one thing that Commissioner Wilson addressed, and I'll do that kind of in my own way. I'm going to go back to the fencing. I think, well, a couple of things about it. I've been out there in Valley a lot of times, and to the north is not exactly a scenic view, for one. Second thing, I think that, given fencing that we are talking about, that a chain link fence is going to be less expensive than cedar fencing. And from the standpoint of safety along the north side, I think that is probably workable and more appropriate. As far as the height goes, five feet, well, I've certainly seen people scale a five-foot chain link fence with no problem. I got to deal with that when I volunteered at Reardon Mansion over a number of years. A lot of students look at that as a very minor impediment. So five feet might be just a little bit short. Six-foot standard chain link fence along the north side of the property, and even to the west side, if you want to do some screening with that, as Commissioner Wilson suggested, slats in the fence might do the trick, although I guess the idea with the cedar fence is to block view of the taxiway, because there are a lot of people who are very fascinated with aircraft, whether they're taking off, landing, or just coming down the taxiway, that is very close. So slats might sufficiently make it difficult enough for somebody to see what they want to look at. So I think that's, that's a good possibility there. So that being said, I think that's about it on my part for this. So I'll turn it over to the rest of the commission for comment on that. And by the way, I think the condition five that Commissioner Best has suggested, we've done this before, and I don't have a problem with that going into the conditions. So that's enough for me for now.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Ruggles. Commissioner Best?
Thank you. So I think you can all see the conditions in the chat to the applicant. You can, staff can help you get some of these materials very easily and very cheaply. The forest, grassland ecology, educational material. We don't have an easy source for yet. And someday I'll get around to working on that. Be a great student project. But the other two things, the forest fire danger sign and leave no trace materials is cheap and easily available. And I think six and seven, I think we can just leave this up to negotiations between the applicant, who's concerned about cost and aesthetics, and the director, who is concerned about safety. Because we've, I think, gone around the barn on that one enough, and I think we all understand the issues involved. Other than that, I can make the findings. I think it's an appropriate development for that area. I did want to ask staff, we do have enough parking, right? Because it looks just very close.
Mr. Best, yes, we do have enough parking. If you notice, there's, I think, like double parking almost within the RV park.
Okay, I just didn't see, I think I didn't see parking within the RV park itself. Okay. All righty, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Williams?
I would feel best with six-foot fence, either solid or chain link, or chain link with slats to the applicant's discretion on the northwest and south sides, full.
When you say full, are you talking about?
I mean, the full length, yes.
Okay, so the entire north and the entire south length?
Yeah.
Okay, so one of the requests that they have in the conditional use is to waive the requirement for a fence on the north side. So it sounds like you do not want to waive the requirement of a fence on the north side.
Not on the entire north side.
Okay.
I know. I feel like we keep coming back to the safety thing, and it's like, if there's not a fence on the north side, people just walk out the north side, and then you have to trust them not to go around the corner and get themselves in trouble, I guess.
I think, I think Mr. Short would like to weigh in on that, because I think there might be some some potential conflicts as who's responsible for what. Mr. Short, go ahead.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Williams. Actually, so that the waiver is to three different things. It's the fence, first of all, also a twenty-foot buffer and a ten-foot landscape strip. So this would just preclude the fence portion of that. So in that case, I would, it depends on how far the commission determines they would like the fence to go, but I would take this out, potentially. Right now, the condition reads that it would be determined by the director how far on the north side it would go. So commission can determine that.
Commissioner Williams, are you okay with, at the discretion of, you know, approved by development director? Is that how much? Okay. All right, do you have any other comments?
No, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Tohe?
Well, I don't have anything else to add. If we're just talking about the fence during this discussion, then I would just opt to leave it to the director and the conversation between what is best for that.
Okay. Commissioner Best, you raise your hand?
Yeah, the next time one of these comes along, I think it should be a standard operating procedure to actively try to communicate with, in this case, the person to the north who is losing the opportunity to have the the setback in the landscaping. I don't know what effort was made to contact them, but I think that they should specifically know, because they are the ones affected. And I just feel a lot more comfortable if they were on the line saying, yeah, we don't care about that. We're going to build, you know, storage units there. So just for the future. Thank you.
Mr. Short, can you address communications to the property owner to the north?
Madam Chair, we did not contact the property owner to the north, but that is a good suggestion from Commissioner Best. They are, some property owners are sometimes difficult to get in touch with. The only thing we have is their address, so it'd be kind of a written letter to them.
And actually, this is just with staff. We have to add that it's required by the zoning ordinance that all surrounding property owners, a minimum of three hundred feet surrounding this property are notified for the neighborhood meeting and the hearing. So the property owner to the north has been notified for both the neighborhood meeting, as required by the applicant, and they're required to be notified for the hearing.
And I would say, that's good, and that's kind of standard operating procedure, but I would, in this case, I would expect maybe a letter to them saying, pointing out the situation that they, unless they speak up, that they are going to lose the lose the setback. Thank you.
Okay. Let's see. Let's continue on with commission discussion at this time. Commissioner Walsh? Do you have anything further that you wanted to?
I have nothing further. I am in agreement with Commissioner Williams, and I can make the findings. Thank you.
Okay. All right, Vice Chair Wilson?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Commissioner Best. I agree completely that we need to know that adjacent property owners have been notified of this, and every effort has been made to communicate what the potential changes are. I believe that in this case, the fence, it's a combination of safety, the other property owner's rights, and the fact that we're giving up that setback is a pretty significant impact here, and we're deviating quite a bit from what the expected standards in this kind of a situation are. So I still believe quite strongly that the fence on the north side needs to respect whatever that property could be zoned for. We don't have a crystal ball here tonight, and if someone wanted to build a residence there, they shouldn't be required to look into a commercial property with the density that we're seeing here. So I still believe strongly that, at least on the north side, there needs to be a complete privacy-type fence. Certainly, on the west side, there has to be some type of a security fence to prevent unsafe kinds of conditions that could exist. And also, to some degree, to the south. So I like the project. I would love to see the improvements to that area, but I think it has to be done with respect to the other property owner's rights and to public safety. Thank you.
Mr. McNeely, since this is kind of a multi-part conditional use, if we have a commissioner who is not happy with one aspect of it, but would be willing to go with the rest, how do we need to, how do we proceed forward with that?
So Chair Burton, I would say if, what I hear Commissioner Wilson saying is that he wants the solid fence requirement along the north property line, then he could propose that as a condition, and then see how the other commissioners would want to would want to support or not that condition.
And I would like to propose that. Thank you.
Okay, that's what I was, that's what I was going for there. Okay, so one more time around the room. We are now addressing whether or not we want to allow them to waive the requirement for a fence on the northern part of the property, or if we want to leave that requirement in place. Commissioner Ruggles?
Thank you. I agree with Commissioner Wilson on the fencing. As he has stated, that saved me a little bit of trouble, because I was also going to bring up the same thing, that is a pretty significant compromise with the landscaping and the setback being waived, but keeping a fence, because we do not have a crystal ball, as I've heard. I look at it the same way. That property to the north is certainly to be respected, as well as the safety issues. So I am very comfortable with that chain link fence, whether it has privacy slats or not. I would just as soon leave that up to the director to do. And otherwise, beyond that, I can make the findings for this.
Okay, so right now, the way it reads is that the distance would be determined by the community development director. And what I'm hearing from Vice Chair Wilson and Commissioner Ruggles is that they want to just make it the distance, but whether or not it's screened with slats would be at the development director. Is that what I'm understanding?
That is correct. That is the way I look at it, because if you only come partway, there's still a lot of open space where somebody can very simply walk around the end of the fence very conveniently, and walk out onto the neighboring property or onto the taxiway very easily. So, like I said, it's a significant compromise by waiving the setback and the landscaping standards along the north side. If you balance the cost out, and I'm sure the applicant is looking at this, that I think might be the best option here, and I certainly look at it that way.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I will go back to the applicant once we're done with discussion to make sure, since we are modifying the conditions, to have them weigh in as well. Okay, Commissioner Williams, I think I already know your thoughts on this, but if you want to go ahead and readdress?
Okay, yeah, I am on board with what Commissioner Wilson proposed and what Commissioner Ruggles reiterated. So that would be my preference.
Okay. Commissioner Tohe? Commissioner Tohe, you're muted.
I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
All right, so I'm fine with however a security fence, as long as it keeps people safe, animals safe, I'm fine with director, you know, conversation with that, discussions on that, and how to proceed from there. So, and I make the findings on everything else. Thank you.
So you're just good with however we move forward, basically?
Basically, yes. I think this is, yeah, excuse me, I think this is a good project. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Walsh?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I can make the findings with the conditions as adjusted in number three and number five and number four. Thank you.
Okay, Vice Chair Wilson, back to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. With the changes, I can make the findings. Thank you.
Okay. All right, seeing as we did make changes to the conditions of approval, I would like to go back to Mr. Cullum and confirm that the applicant understands, and just provide us some feedback on that. Mr. Cullum?
Madam Chairman, Tony Cullum, fourteen East Dale. A couple of things, just very briefly. As you know, the applicant is the one that actually does the notices for the property owners. And under that, we really wanted to get with that property owner and have a talk with him and work it all the way out, because as commissioners pointed out, that's the best way to do it. Well, the short version is, in this commercial owner, we wrote him letters, we wrote him certified letters, we said he, well, Guy Eklund in my office, the paralegal, did it. Guy, go ahead and tell them everything you did.
Guy Eklund, fourteen East Dale, Flagstaff, Arizona. On September, a representative of the property did, to the north, did attend the original neighborhood meeting. And so I had on the sign-in sheet, I was able to contact the representative for that property owner, and on September twenty-fifth, I emailed that representative a copy of the site plan and wanted to get their thoughts and whatnot, and I actually spoke with them on a couple of occasions. And I was told that he was going to get in touch with the owner that he was representing, and they never called back. So, but I did personally, on behalf of the applicant, try to make efforts with that property to the north.
So we had conversations with him, we sent him letters, we sent him emails, and we sent him certified letters, none of which were returned. But getting back to where we're at right now, it doesn't look like it's a major problem. I think we're set with what you guys are saying, and I think we're all on the same page.
Okay, all right, that's what I wanted to make sure. All right, if no further discussion, then I can entertain a motion. So we have two motions that we have to make here. One is approval of the CUP with the modified conditions. And then we would also need a motion for a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors for the zone change. The, I would say we do them one at a time, or we can do them the same, but if someone wants to start that off, if there's no more discussion.
This is Commissioner Walsh. I recommend that our commission approves CUP twenty-four zero thirty-four with the changes noted, and forwards a recommendation of approval of ZC twenty-four zero zero five to the Board of Supervisors with the recommended conditions.
I will second that motion.
Okay, well, we'll take Commissioner Ruggles as the second there. Okay, so we have a motion for approval of CUP twenty-four, or CUP twenty-four zero thirty-four with the conditions as have been modified. And then we have an approval to recommend ZC twenty-four zero zero five to the Board of Supervisors. All those in favor? Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Tohe?
Aye.
Commissioner Walsh?
Aye.
Vice Chair Wilson?
Aye.
And this is Chair Burton. I also vote aye. The motion's passed unanimously. And the last item on the agenda is a call to the public for items not on the agenda. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to address the commission for items not on the agenda? Seeing none, it is seven thirty-six PM, and the meeting is adjourned. Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you very much. Congratulations to our new chair and vice chair. Great job.
Yeah, nice evening. Thanks, all.